Good morning and welcome to the regular public workshop meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, March 5th, 2012. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, there is one item that I would like to add, and that would be after the discussion of the fiber, would be a budget update by Mike Bush. And he has some good news he'd like to share as it relates to SPOST. And with that change being made, I'd like to ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So, movement chair.
Motion by Mr. Holmes and a second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. At this time, we're moving to administration, discussion of government use only fiber optic network. Our presenter is Clark Rayner, Technology Services Director, exhibit number one.
May I, Mr. Rayner, comment on this if you don't mind?
Yes, Mr. Bowman.
I think everyone knows that I work for telecommunications companies. I work for a lot of companies. I've done work for Coke and Georgia Power and a number, but I work also for Sprint and for AT&amp;T and for Verizon and some others. So, while I don't want everybody to think that that's the only thing that I do, I mean, I built the building that we're sitting in, and several schools in Henry County and buildings throughout the southeast. So, at this time, due to the fact that I'm deeply into fiber optic and other type businesses, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion. I have not sit in any discussions on anything that had anything to do with the fiber optic. And I don't feel like that I should sit in on this one, simply because either way I go, somebody's going to say I'm going to profit from it one way or the other. But so, at the end of the day, I'm going to recuse myself from this, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. All right, Mr. Rayner? It's all yours.
Good morning. Good morning. First of all, I'd like to start off with, we've heard a number of different renditions of plans that would address the need for higher-capacity data services for governments and school systems throughout Henry County. We've also, in past, plans attempted to tackle some of the lack of infrastructure for our commercial settings and for economic development as well. We'll leave what we have for you today is completely new plan, which addresses, it does actually address both the government side and an opportunity for addressing the economic development needs in Henry County without the government actually physically, personally getting involved with the delivery of services. And real quickly, you have an updated copy, I believe the one that you have is a color copy that the county clerk made. The one that I made was a black and white copy. I just wanted to state that for the record, as it goes back to previous discussions. Enough with that.
[inaudible]
That's right. I told her I was going to do that. Now, we appreciate you taking the time and hearing this. I know that it's sort of been beaten to death, you know, here. It's gone through many different renditions. We've, you know, gone back to the drawing board time and time and time again with this, but we believe today we have a very solid plan that will meet the needs of governments, will ultimately, it'll mean we're going to be spending less money than we're spending today, and we'll be in, we'll increase the level of service for governments throughout the county. So, without further ado, I'll get started. Real briefly, I'm going to start by just stating the problem, stating some of the things that are the problem, why we're even doing this, what the solution is, why we believe that fiber optic is future-proof, and why we think that there's not just some other technology right around the corner that can surplan it or be better than that, and why it's physically sound to be able to go ahead and do that now. And then finally, what are the next steps? Where do we go from today? First of all, the problem. The problem, number one, is our expenses today. And we'll talk about those expenses in terms of, these are the checks that we are paying out with tax dollars today to lease service from incumbent providers of telecommunications services. The second thing that dovetails into the expenses is the level of service. The level of service that we're getting today for the amount of money that we have budgeted is not sufficient to supply the level of service needed and required to deliver the amount of services here in the government, especially in education, and then also the lack of service, period, availability of any infrastructure for economic development or for multiple service providers for economic development purposes. And we'll just touch on that, because really, this plan is really not about the economic development portion. It is really addressing the government needs portion alone. Well, we'll roll right into the expenses. These are expenses that were taken from the last three years accounts payable. These were literally the checks that were written out of budgets using taxpayer dollars from Henry County Board of Commissioners General Fund, from the Henry County Board of Education General Fund, and from the Henry County Water and Sewage Authority General Fund. These are tax dollars that are being spent today, and you'll see a trend here, and you'll see a trend for what we've estimated is next year's as well. If you look down at the bottom, you'll see that there has been a downward trend, and that's because each of these agencies in these tough economic times have had to make tough decisions, downgrading some services, going out to bid wherever we can to try to lower those services, and we've been fairly successful. But as we've gotten quotes and that sort of thing for next year, we're seeing that that's starting to trend back upward. And there may be a number of reasons for that. I know healthcare costs are going up for all of these private sector companies that are, we're starting to see an increase in service costs throughout the board for not only telecommunications services, but for all services, and there's a number of driving factors that are leading to that, we believe. But as you can see, out of the calendar year 2011, a little over $1.5 million has been spent, was already spent, using taxpayer dollars to spend on leasing services without, I mean, today we don't have anything to show for that. We don't own, have any part of ownership in that as well. Moving on. This addresses the current level of service. Schools currently have .0015 megabits per second of internet access per student, or about 1/1,000 of what a home broadband signal delivers, and that's the basic level of home broadband. That equates to about 11.3 megs per school. Here in Henry County Government, Henry County currently, we have .02 megabytes per employee of internet bandwidth, or about 1/100 of what a home broadband connection delivers. Equates to about 1.1 megabits per second per building. Henry County Government utilizes, well, let me explain to you why there's a little bit of difference in between what the schools have and what we have. One of the things that the county has that schools don't is we have a public-facing whole menagerie of e-services that are delivered, whether that's broadcasting of this meeting or any other meeting online using video. That's a high-intensity, high-use of bandwidth, but also all of the e-services that we offer, paying taxes online, being able to look up taxes, all of the court services, paying tickets, a number of e-services that actually are citizen-driven, and that requires a higher level of bandwidth just immediately, that we just can't live without today. But that's why there's a difference. Not to mention that there's 40,000 students in the school system, all of which are not on the internet necessarily at the same exact time. But moving along.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On those megabits per second per student, what does this allow them to do or what does it prevent them from doing in a school setting? How is it hindering them?
Sure. Well, there's a number of different e-learning-type applications. For instance, a biology lab where they're doing video from site to site, from classroom to classroom, or from home to classroom, or from independent studies to classroom. It really limits the ability of the school system to be able to do that, especially carry on an interactive live conversation with a teacher that may be halfway around the world, teaching, you know, a foreign language or any number of things. They may be interfacing with a classroom at Emory University while, you know, medical procedures is going on for a biology class. There are literally endless numbers of applications that the school system is limited for being able to do right now. A cultural, a big cultural event such as a presidential debate, a presidential inauguration, something like that, which is all-encompassing, which, you know, you really kind of want to afford the opportunity for all students to see. I remember, you know, when I was in grade school, we all piled into the auditorium to watch the space shuttle launch, or to watch solar eclipse, you know, these types of things, where every student needs to be on at the same time, or at least every classroom needs to be on at the same time.
Compared to other schools in the metro area, what are their capabilities, do you know?
Certainly the ones on the north side of Atlanta have a lot more capacity than what we have here. I haven't done a site-by-site comparison of all the school systems, and I would have to defer to my colleague over at the school system. I don't know.
That's what I was going to say, if I could add on.
Please do.
Just from my background, being at the Board of Education, I will tell you, one of the things that we are running into challenges, what I see going forward, is most things in education, just like what's happening with technology, is going to virtual-type classrooms. I mean, we are looking at the Impact Academy that the Board of Education is currently looking at with Dr. Hildreth, is that they want to bring in high-caliber teachers to offer alternative resources for students who maybe don't fit the traditional classroom standard, is not the best way for them to learn. Homeschooled students who want to participate in extracurricular activities will have the potential to go through a virtual classroom, and bandwidth is a big problem with that. So, that's where it does tie in to kind of what you were talking about from the Board of Education. They definitely need more bandwidth.
And something else that just occurred to me is that I've heard a lot of talk about, you know, basically getting rid of all of the paper-based textbooks and moving those to e-readers or to iPads and that type of thing. But that's never going to work unless you have the sufficient bandwidth in place to be able to do that, to even be able to take advantage of those new tools out there and the ones that the children are used to using.
Those northern suburban schools, do they own their own networks, or did they create public-private partnerships with the providers?
There is a conglomeration of several different, I guess, avenues of how that's been done. Some are exclusively owned by the school system themselves, some are public-private partnerships, some are, they just happen to be in a district where the private industry has, for whatever reason, you know, done their job and sufficiently supplied, and has driven the price down. There's a lot of competition in those areas. There are many suppliers. Whereas here in Henry County, there are two basic suppliers of the baseline or the core network.
And those suppliers are?
Those are AT&amp;T and Charter Communications that independently own their own networks There are some other suppliers, but they don't typically offer service to end-users. You can buy other service from other suppliers, but they're still using the same core infrastructure that's been built by AT&amp;T and Charter's. And in a lot of cases, like the last line says, we have many parks, that sort of thing that are just not serviceable at all. And I was out at Mosley Park at the, I mean, at a, not Mosley, it was Mount Carmel Park at the soccer complex just the other day trying to do a survey, and we're trying to work with those folks, trying to get internet so that parents and students alike can access the internet while, you know, enjoying the park out there. And that's a need that's sort of been, you know, parent-driven around the county.
It almost sounds like I-75 during rush hour coming into Henry County, everybody trying to pile on this one little roadway.
In a way, that's an analogy that's been used. No, I'll move on.
Please.
I just wanted to touch on economic development briefly. Henry County is in competition with every single other county in the nation, every single other country in the world for jobs on a day-to-day basis. It is a struggle, and it takes an enormous number of things in our economic development toolbox. Twenty years ago, fiber was not that necessary to attract high-tech companies, or any companies for that matter. Today, it is essential. I know of at least several, from firsthand knowledge, of companies that have looked at Henry County and have gone on to other, either other counties or other states, even in the last 12 months. I'll go back, and this goes back to, I guess, about 12 years ago now, but there was a company that looked at Henry County, I think we were down to, they were down to two choices, Henry and Douglas, and the single reason why Douglas County was chosen for the site was because of their redundant, they had three different suppliers, three unique suppliers of access to the internet. And for anything like a data center, that's an absolute essential thing to do. They have to be able to have, you know, multiple connections so that if something happens to one, that the other can pick up. Literally seconds of downtime can mean millions and millions of dollars in lost revenue and lost customers to the companies that locate in the type of facilities that we'd like to attract here in Henry County. Most recently, Microsoft announced that they were locating their data center in the same park adjacent to the company that chose Douglas over Henry all those years ago. And here we are, 12, 13 years later, we still don't have the ability to attract those companies. The private sector has not stepped up and provided that level of access to our industrial parks and to our sites that would be sufficient in terms of space and quality and electricity and transportation and all the other things, education. We meet many of the other requirements. The one we don't meet so many times is not having multiple suppliers to quality extremely high-bandwidth internet access. I've got a link here that, give it just a second, because it's going to have to come up, and we may have to go through a commercial, but this is a story that 11 Alive did back a few months ago. But it talks about how Alpharetta has been able to do so well with their fiber infrastructure. And, you know, you go up there and you wonder, how did they get all of these businesses? Well, I'd just like you to take a look at this video as it comes up. Again, this is courtesy of 11 Alive, directly from their website. Go through the brief commercial first.
The latest high-tech corporation to relocate its headquarters to Alpharetta, Georgia. Agilisys will mean another 100 jobs for this city that has been attracting high-tech companies like nectar draws bees.
Every job helps.
James Drinkard of the City of Alpharetta says that more than 30 high-tech companies have moved to Alpharetta in the past five years, and the reason what's attracting them is buried under the city.
The fiber optic network is really something that sets us apart.
The fiber optic network was first installed for the 1996 Olympics in Atlanta.
And now, Alpharetta is the hub of the largest fiber optic network in the country. That equates to really hundreds, if not thousands, of jobs that have come into Alpharetta. We really are an employment hub for all of metro Atlanta.
The high-tech corporations are nestled deep within wooded office parks behind high-tech security. Drinkard says some locations are secret. He has to notify Homeland Security if anyone even asks about them.
Yeah, I know this year, we've generated probably, in the North Fulton footprint, probably about 2,000 new jobs.
Al Nash of Progress Partners of North Fulton, Atlanta, says the explosion of high-tech corporations moving to Alpharetta is keeping taxes low and generating new housing and new retail across North Fulton.
Who's your competition across the country?
Well, I think, I don't know if it's around the country, it could very well be the world. We are the data center capital of the southeast, and we almost lead the country in data centers.
Like bees to nectar.
The great quality of life plus all that great infrastructure.
In Alpharetta, John Sheerick, 11 Alive News.
Can I ask you a question about that video?
Sure.
It was a little bit choppy and didn't play as smoothly as we would normally see it on our TV. Does that have anything to do with our internet service?
Certainly, I'm connected over wireless connection, and it worked this morning just fine. I think by the time everybody else gets into the building, they start taking a piece of that pie, and it certainly limits, you know, the ability to do that. Should have plugged it up, I guess, into the hardline network. Nonetheless, it sort of illustrates the point, too. Moving back, the last thing I'll talk about for economic development is the Economic Development Authority, in cooperation with a number of community leaders, has recently conducted a target industry study, Market Street Study, I believe is exactly what it's called. But these are just quotes directly from the study, from the drafts that have been put out. But right now, that firms are beginning to nearshore, that means bring jobs back to the U.S. from offshore. Nearshore customer care, processing centers for complex support solutions, management functions, and proposed new investment, it's talking about this fiber network that we're talking about today, in telecommunications infrastructure would provide a transformative new asset for this community. Digitization of every form of information continually opening new opportunities for entrepreneurs and innovators. I mean, it's, it has infiltrated literally every aspect of our lives, and it's infiltrated every aspect of education even more so. I can tell you that my father is very averse to the use of technology and the internet, and there are a few people out there like that. But this next generation coming up, the next, the generation of workers that are entering the workforce today, they have to have it. Smart companies that expect to be able to compete, compete on the worldwide markets have got to have this type, this ultra-high-speed level of access in order to be able to compete with the rest of the world. They're not going to locate their jobs here if they don't have it. Okay. I'm going to start off with, you know, should you decide that this is an avenue that you want to go down, you know, what are the end results going to be if, in the future, if you decide to adopt this plan that I'm presenting before you today? One is, it will provide flexibility and the ability to serve unserved locations such as Mount Carmel Park, the traffic signals throughout the county, so that we can synchronize those. It'll provide a much greater level of flexibility to install new buildings, new technologies, et cetera, moving forward, but also provide 10 times the amount of bandwidth for less money than we're spending today. Let me say that again. It will provide at least 10 times the level of service for less money than we're spending today. This would be like going to the gas station and spending, and getting 10 gallons of gas for the price you pay for one. That's kind of the analogy I'd like to use. So, we're using the same dollar, and we're going to get 10 times as much for it. And again, these are currently budgeted dollars that are being spent today. No additional dollars have been targeted, no additional monies have been targeted to fit this plan. And the third thing is that it will provide an avenue for the private sector. It'll provide opportunity for economic development by offering the wholesale, wholesale of dark fiber, and that's the dark fiber only with no services. And we're going to do so in a non, we're going to do so to allow for nondiscriminatory access. And that means that we can't tell AT&amp;T they can't buy it. We can't tell Charter they can't buy it. We can tell them they can't buy any more than about 20% of it, and that's what this plan will call for. And that's to prevent any single provider from coming and buying it all up and basically shutting everybody else out of the market. The plan calls for driven competition, letting the private sector do what it does well and letting the government do what we do well. Real quickly, and I just wanted to define some of these terms to be clear on what I mean by these things. Dark fiber, and that is fiber that has not been attached to any equipment and provides no utility or benefit without equipment. No services are provided over dark fiber. We're not providing internet, we're providing a raw material. I don't know, Shay, can you switch over to, and I'll pass this around, but, I don't know if you can see on the screen, this is a piece of fiber.
Confused, I'm sorry.
Sure.
So, we would own the network, and then we would sell bandwidth to the providers?
No, no, not at all. We would own the network. We would, we would actually contract with a, an outside agency, an outside firm, we would put it out to bid to basically run the network on the governments that have for the government. Because it is so inexpensive to run excess capacity, and I can talk about that here, and I will talk about that here in just a moment, about why that is and why there is a, why sometimes it's actually cheaper to buy more fiber than it is to buy less fiber. It has to do with the way things are manufactured, it has to do with where the true cost of installing the raw infrastructure is. I'll get to that in just a moment, but most of the costs are involved with permitting and with labor costs of actually installing it, and petroleum costs. The fiber itself is a minuscule portion of the cost of installing this network. But I'll get to that. What I'm showing you here on the screen is actually a piece of fiber. This is a 12-strand, single-tube piece of fiber. If you'll notice right here, these are fillers. And so, basically, these companies, they set this up for manufacturing of a diameter of cable this big around. And even if you only order 12 strands, they're still going to fill up this whole thing full of plastic. That's where your big bulk of your costs are. That's 12 strands of fiber are right in there. And so, basically, we would take, we would fill this entire thing up with fiber cable. But we would take half of this and devote that, nothing but to government, and we would light that up for our use and for the school system's use. And the other half, we would basically say, you know, for, you know, would probably be auctioned off. That's typically how this is done and how the FCC likes to see it done. It would be auctioned off to the highest vendors at whatever the market rate was, and let the market determine what those costs were. None of those revenue sources are figured into this plan. That would be something that this board or some future board could decide to do or not decide to do in the future. You don't have to, it's not a part of this plan, it's not necessary to make this plan work. The commercial component is there to help drive economic development and there to help bring jobs to Henry County, but I will leave that up to the board or to some future board, should, you know, that be something that you choose not to do. If you don't know, I'll just walk this up. I'll take a look at that, I'll just sort of move down the slide here. We understand that dark fiber is, it's one of those little pieces of glass that is nothing attached to it. That's what a piece of dark fiber is, and that's what we would be offering is access, you know, if we, if that's something you choose to do. Again, this, this plan does not require that to happen. An interconnect, interconnect is connecting, imagine all 51 schools, connecting each school back to the home office. That's the interconnect. The internet, that is connecting all 51 schools and the network that connects all of them to the rest of the world. That's the internet. So, there's two different terms, they're very similar in how they're pronounced, but interconnect is just connecting the local system together. Internet is actually connecting to the outside world so that you can do things like email and surf websites and do those telecommunications, online live video conferences, that sort of thing. I've got internet defined here, but internet is a global network of interconnected networks. It is a network of networks that consists of millions of private, public, academic, business, and government networks of local to global scope that are linked by a broad array of electronic, wireless, and optical network technology. What a mouthful. And it is over the internet that you, you know, use services like the internet, like websites and video and YouTube and email and those types of things. Just as a general mention here, the hub of the internet looks very much like the hub of transportation does for the southeast. The hub of the internet is in downtown Atlanta. The piece that you saw from Alpharetta is doing exactly the same thing that we want to do here, is that they're plugged in directly to that hub, and that they've expanded that local loop for the city of Alpharetta, and that's what we're wanting to do for Henry What I, what you see before you here is a map of all of the major trunk lines. It consists of about four local loops. Loops are important in design because it provides for redundancy of service. If the cable is ever cut in a single place, the equipment can automatically switch the signal back around and deliver service the other way. The way it, you know, if you cut one point on a circle, there's still another way if you reverse your signal. But I just wanted to point that out. This is the map, it's available online for all to review as well. Now we're going to get into the how. You know, this is exactly what we're going to do, how we're going to do this. And one is, you know, to build a fiber optic network as specified in the plan. Again, the services that are offered over this are going to be for government-only service. We're not going to provide service to any single, you know, private company or entity. Again, all we would be offering there, and that's up to you if you want to do it or not do it, is to service, is to actually offer the dark fiber up for lease by any company that wants to do it in a nondiscriminatory way. The operation of the network, again, would be outsourced. And we would put this out to bid for, there's a number of different companies that operate these networks around the country. They do it from central locations, they're fully staffed 24 by 7. And those are for instances where there's a cut in the cable or there's a configuration change or we're adding a facility, those types of things. We'd need a management company to actually handle that and be able to answer the phone on 24/7 basis, roll trucks when they needed and that sort of thing. Again, we would just, Henry County, we would just be a customer to, you know, that, that organization, whoever, whoever won the bid on that. Next, again, any surplus capacity, and that is because it's so inexpensive to build in surplus capacity that it would be quite silly not to do it. It would be, it would be a travesty not to do it. And it would be like, you know, building a new road and if you were able to put in an extra 10 lanes for, you know, three cents on the dollar, not doing that. That's, that's the closest thing I can equate it to. Basically, any, if there were any revenue from leasing that service, I assume that it would be used to pay down the debt service even sooner and get us to a positive savings mode even sooner. I've talked about because of the petroleum cost, labor cost, et cetera, it's, it can actually be less expensive to buy more fiber up front. I know that's counterintuitive, but the, you know, it's cheaper to go buy a 2 by 4, pressure treated 2 by 4 than it is a pressure treated 1 by 4 from the hardware store. You're getting a better piece of wood, more wood. Well, why on earth does it cost, you know, more to get the smaller piece of wood? Well, it has to do with, you know, a number of factors, manufacturing and labor costs and that sort of thing, and the same is true for fiber. And I've provided some examples there, those will go up on the web, and I've provided the source in which I found those, those costs as well. I'm operating on my eight-year-old laptop. Okay. This is, this is, we're getting into the meat. This is how much. The total cost, it is what it always has been, $14 million. We were able to get a quote yesterday for whatever the current bond rating is and bond financing options is, are, as of, I'm sorry, as of Friday, those are 2.5% right now for 15 years. The variable in recurring costs, principal and interest, and this is annualized, would be, you know, 1.143 million. Annual operating expenses of $331,000 per year, and that's again to pay whoever's outsourced to be able to operate the network operations center, run trucks, perform brake fix type issues when those things occur. Total annual expenses of 1.474,000 per year. And if you recall, the current expenses that we are spending today are over 1.5 million dollars. So in year one, I believe the number's about $65,000 that you might see as immediate savings if you were to do this right away.
And we currently have.
And 10 times better service, 10 times better service for less money. And that's just the government portion alone paying for itself. You can decide what to do about the private sector part or decide to do nothing. You know, it's irrelevant in terms of what I do for Henry County. Again, once, once the payout had been given in 15 years, and that's based on the current expenditures and it's based on these current numbers here, would be in, after 10 years, you would basically be saving taxpayers 1.169 million dollars per year. That would be money that could be spent on education, on roads, on whatever you wanted to. Tax breaks, I don't, you know, whatever, whatever the budget called for. Again, that's 15 years out, and so that would be, you know, something that a future board would, would need to decide or, you know, who knows what, where we'll be in 15 years.
Clark, where would the 14 million come from?
It came from the feasibility study of business plan that was developed by Royal Broadband back, I believe, about two and a half years ago.
Okay.
And again, that study was funded by the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Education, the Chamber of Commerce, all four cities. They all pitched in to help pay for that and really kind of see what it would cost, what the real numbers were. And those, those numbers are based on market, on market figures. Obviously, if it's chosen to move forward, we would ask that those figures be refreshed at this point.
They come from AT&amp;T? Those numbers come from AT&amp;T or Charter?
No, no. Those were developed, those were developed, basically built on, on similar municipal fiber projects that have been built throughout the country and in Georgia in the past several years. And they're also based on, you know, the market rates for raw materials, labor, that sort of thing. Again, the level of service would increase by tenfold for the interconnect, 50 times for back, I mean, for Internet access, 50 times for backbone infrastructure. Each government facility and school would receive 100 meg's of Internet as compared with the roughly 11 meg's that the school's getting today and a 1 gigabit dedicated backbone infrastructure to run on.
Hey Clark, just a second, please.
Sure.
A question. On the, on the savings per year after the payout, the 1.169 million dollars times 15 years is what, 17,500, 17, 17 million 500,000?
Sorry.
I really do.
Right.
You're talking about a 17,5 savings over the life of the 15-year payout, correct?
It's after, after it's paid off.
So that savings is not even per until after 15 years?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we have, there'll be some savings.
There will be some savings. I believe the savings is about $65,000 a year directly after, in year one. And that's meeting the principal and interest cost payments and the operating expenses.
And that's on today's costs, but next, yeah, next.
Today's expenses.
There's no way to really factor in what the rising cost of those services are going to be from the providers we have in the years to come.
If you can tell me how many buildings exactly we need or how many parks we'll need to service in 15 years, it's, you know, nonetheless, the, the price per location is definitely going to be much less expensive if we don't have to pay for, you know, the infrastructure and the interest.
Mr. Ryan, if we're, if we're bonding this with this board, is there going to be any increase in mileage or anything else? I know our operating costs look like it covers it, but just is there no increase in mileage or anything else like that?
No, no. In fact, absolutely not. The whole point of this plan is that we are going to use current expenses, current budgeted items. If you go back to that first chart where I showed expenses, and those are real dollars, these are real tax dollars that are being spent on substandard service today. Those are, those numbers came from accounts payable. Those were literally checks that were written out of the general funds of the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Education and the Water and Sewage Authority. Those are real tax dollars that are being spent today. I've been often asked, well, Clark, you know, why don't we do something wireless? You know, isn't that better? Or what about satellite? Or how can you promise me that, you know, there's nothing that's going to be better than fiber that, you know, as soon as we get into it, the technology, you know, as soon as you buy a new computer, it's outdated the next day or the next month? Well, and I don't mean to be sarcastic by any of these answers at all, but I mean, literally, the laws of physics play a part in this. As far as I know, there is nothing faster that can send a signal, digital or any otherwise, faster than the speed of light. At least the current technology and current science is able to, to understand. I'm not saying that there's nothing out there, it's that we, no one on earth that I'm aware of knows anything faster. I'm often asked about what about satellites? Just the physical location of a satellite is so far up in, up in space that it takes about 2.2 seconds to send a signal up and back and up and back again. And that's how many times it has to happen before you actually receive information. Here's what's called a three-way handshake that goes on. Request for information, validation of information, and then delivery of information is what goes on. That 2.2 seconds is called latency. And that means every time you pick up the phone to try to make a phone call, there's a 2.2 second delay in every word you say. There's a 2.2 second, and it just doesn't work with, with voice, it doesn't work with video, it just, it, it's tremendously, it takes forever for anything to happen. You cannot do what's called a VPN connection over it very well, which is basically how most everyone that teleworks does that. So that's out. It just does not compete with fiber at all. It just, it's, it's not the same thing and it's very expensive as well. The satellites that are up there have been there over 10 years. Don't know of any that are being launched today that would change any of that. The next thing is, well, you know, about what, what makes fiber the best thing going? And it really boils down to it's the speed of light. It is the speed of light. And I don't know of anything faster. What about, you know, how much capacity can fiber actually take? You know, how, how fast can you send things? You know, we're going to be supplying, you know, a gigabit worth of service to all of our local government facilities and 100 meg's of Internet. How fast can, can it deliver? Theoretically, it's, it's almost unlimited. And the reason being is that one of those itty-bitty strands of fiber can hold multiple, multiple, multiple signals using various wavelengths of light. If you look at the color spectrum of light, imagine sending one yellow and one red and one green and one blue, and then all the variants in between there. It literally can hold a tremendous amount of data at the single time. I heard the statistic and I just don't remember it offhand about how many phone calls a single strand of fiber can handle at a single time, but it's, it's in the millions, just, just as an example. I'll be happy to answer any questions about that. The next steps, and we're not asking for a vote today at all. What we're asking for is some direction to be given to the county, our deputy county manager and to staff on, you know, what you want us to do. We think we've done as much work on our end as we can right now without getting some direction from the board. What we'd like to ask is that you sort of, you send us on our way seeking letters of commitment. Because the way, what really makes this thing work is a long-term commitment by the Board of Education, the Board of Commissioners and the Water and Sewage Authority. And it's you, and having a long-term commitment in that we're actually going to use those expenses today to pay for our future use of this network moving forward for 15 years. And so we're asking you to give us some direction to address those, the various boards and authorities out there. We're not going to include any of the cities and GDOT and those things. We would like to leave those open as optional if they would like to come on at some point in the future. You know, let them come and go as they please. But really focused on the three, the three big ones here in Henry County, the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Education and the Henry County Water and Sewage Authority. The next thing is that we would seek to, we would like to seek approval to move forward with some financing options. That's basically directing staff to, to move forward with a, you know, full-blown financial plan that can meet the test of the bond markets and any of the financial questions that you may have so that we can give you solid end-of-day real numbers that, that have to be accounted for. And finally, we would ask that, that you would give us direction to, to re-approach Royal Broadband, to refresh those numbers from the $14 million plan to make sure nothing has changed significantly, gone up or down, so that we are, so that we are actually, you know, planning for the, you know, the most accurate accounting of what the plan should be. With that, I'll take any other questions and I certainly thank you for your time. I'll be happy to address any public comments as well if needed.
Brian?
I read, I wrote some notes down over the weekend because I really, I've gotten a lot of comment from some, from some of the citizens of District 2, but then I feel like with my background at the Board of Education, I see where education's going, there's definitely a need for fiber. I mean, that, that's where education's going also in a company that sends a lot of data up, and that's where your real problem is. I mean, it's one thing to download movies and content to your personal computer, but when you actually start creating data or housing data and then trying to send it back up the system, good luck with what we currently have. And I do understand that that is what puts us really in the dark ages compared to some of our neighbors up on the north side. We're getting to a time with, with this modern world we're in where really infrastructure with fiber and other things and bandwidth is just as important as your roads and water and utilities and other things like that. But I do have some concerns. The biggest thing that bothered me was the money. I mean, I understand it's a great deal, we can save a lot of money with this in the long term, but we've got some tough financial times here with the county. And I don't like us competing against the private sector because I just think that's opening up Pandora's box to a lot of concerns for what we could do in the future. And I don't know if we're the greatest efficient provider of doing those things.
Understood.
So with the ownership concerns me. So that leads to, because I hate, I don't want to be a complainer without giving some thought. So I was thinking, well, how do we make this happen? Because it, we need it. I mean, if we're ever going to push this county to where we get more businesses or we don't lose Microsoft to, to other neighboring communities or we don't, or we lose, you know, Caterpillar that went to Coney County. I mean, it's things like that, you can't tell me this doesn't go into their equation when they're, when they're looking at it. So the solution I had was just looking at this and talking to other people is, you've just laid out a beautiful thing. We pay for this. I mean, it pays for it with what we're, the school board as well as the county commission. So why can't we be the carrot, the anchor for, I mean, we've just made the biggest no-brainer business decision for any one of our current providers to want to come in and do this for us? Because we could sign, I know we can't go beyond a year, but we could sign an automatic renewing, assuming these terms are met as a government entity. Why can't we be the anchor for three to five years to pay this thing off and get them to come in and invest in Henry County? Profits are easy when we take the risk away. And then I know we don't have the ownership and we don't get that million-dollar savings after the year 15, but we'll get paid back in spades on the additional businesses that will hopefully be here in 15 years and the tax revenue we'll get from that. So is there, have we gone out there and seen, is there anybody that'd do this for us?
I'll make, I'll make this comment. You know, we've, we've had, we have produced this business plan, we've made it published, you know, for the private sector. My hopes were that, you know, we would have a Google or somebody to come in and, you know, say, wow, y'all have put together the business plan. We're going to take this and run with it. But AT&amp;T hasn't done it, Charter hasn't done it, they're not willing to place, they're not willing to do the capital investment right now. And that's where we're really stuck, is that, and we beg them, you know, to, to make some capital investment in, in our business parks and for our schools and whatnot, and they're just not willing to do it. That's not where their global strategy is. And I think we've put that out there. It's been out there publicly available for certainly every citizen and anybody, any private company that would like to, you know, to take the plan and run with it. Maybe today. Maybe today's the day.
And I want to, because I know you've, this is, you and I have had a chance to talk, Mr. Rayner.
Sure.
You know, when I was on the Board of Education, we talked about, this started, this communication started in 2007, and here we are in 2012. I don't want this, but have y'all, I mean, that's the biggest thing, is I want to see if we could maybe find, if AT&amp;T won't do it, if Charter won't do it, is there a third party? I'm just hopeful that with what y'all have put together, like I said, this is the biggest no-brainer, that a private entity could come in here, take the risk out of it, because we're going to sign on as their anchor tenants or customers and move forward with it.
We can certainly put it out there. Anybody watching?
Well, that's exactly right, in this day and time.
The comments, Brian, that you just made, I think, Clark, you remember, that was some of the first comments that were made back here when this thing was first started to circulate. And that was, number one, I have a problem with competing with the private sector. Number two, approach them. It came back to us that they were not willing to participate at the level. Now, this has happened over the last several years. I know Bob White's here this morning. We even talked specifically about an industrial development, that one of the providers was asked to extend the service into that development, and they said, "No. Only if you pay for every connection throughout the entire development." And if I'm wrong, you tell me I'm wrong, but I, am I right?
They'll, they'll be willing to do it as long as somebody else pays the upfront cost.
That's, that's my point, exactly. So, as a last-ditch effort, I agree with the Commissioner, that we don't want to compete with the private sector, but it's a no-brainer, if we come back and the private sector is not willing to participate, that we get ten times the service for the same dollar. And yes, there's a fifteen-year commitment with bonds. And at the end of that period, and I made some notes too, and I want to ask you some questions, Clark. Once, in assuming, whether it be by private means or by the program or the system that you're talking about here with being a government-owned system, what position does that put us in within the North Atlanta, the Alpharetta that you showed us on here, as far as being able to compete? Or even not just necessarily to the North Side, because there is a distinct difference between the North Side and the South Side. People can like it, don't like it, or whatever it is. That's where the majority of the money has gone over the last fifty years, and that means they're that far ahead, and will continue to be. But we still can't just not do anything. We have to, where does that put us? As far as in competition with attracting some of the businesses that you showed us?
It certainly, you know, opens up an opportunity for, you know, a number of other providers to come in and compete. I mean, today, we have two basic providers here in Henry County providing the service, and they're not everywhere they need to be. You know, they're not at that facility you spoke of, you know, about Bob White. They're not where they need to be, they're not everywhere they need to be. What this plan does, and what it had done, you know, when it was first laid out, was it actually goes ahead and pre-bills. In order to reach all the government facilities, which, they're spread out fairly evenly, you know, throughout Henry County. And so, what it does is that, when we build that network to reach the government facilities, we on purpose go by and go through those industrial parks, we go through those commercial areas, we lay that foundation, we make that capital investment ahead of time without giving any service away. We're doing it to reach the government facilities. But it, you know, it is, it is like building a road, you know, and it is, you know, allowing everybody else to ride on that road. But without, I'm trying to think of how to place that analogy. The government service, we'll get a full-service transportation, you know, bus from site to site. Everybody else just gets to ride on it with their own equipment.
And also, and I can understand from the private sector's concern, is large as Henry County is area-wise, and we're going to take schools from Fairview or from Austin Road to Locust Grove or to Llewella, or from Hampton to Ola, or to Rock Springs, a lot of mileage. Let's take the Water Authority as an example. From Tussah Hall to Tallalika, to the north at Fairview. You just think about the distance and the area that's going to have to be, or the network that's going to have to be put up, the highways that are going to have to be put up to service these places. That's probably the reason they're not as attracted to it as we are. We see the need, and it's, again, it's just a decision.
There's largely a chicken-or-the-egg sort of concept out there. You know, companies only want to come and want to locate to where it already exists. The companies that own the infrastructures out there today only want to build to companies that are going to give them an immediate paycheck for it.
And also, if it was just a city as an example, you know the providers are going to be more willing to provide service to a city.
They're attracted to density, for sure.
To density, simply for that reason, because it's less investment. My last question would be, assuming this program went into effect, we lived through it, we made it through the fifteen years, I do have one more after that, but after the bonds have been paid off and you're down to where you say it's showing a cost of $331,000 a year, which I don't know how you can project that in it being fifteen years out, but nevertheless, maybe more, maybe less. But at that point, how would you proportion the share of the cost of the system between the users at the time? Whether it be the BOC, the BOE, the Water and Sewer Authority, whoever it might be? How would you, at that point?
Sure. I think it would be based on, you know, current usage or, you know, usage over the life of the fifteen years, how much they've paid into it. You know, if the BOE has paid in two-thirds, for instance, then they would get two-thirds of the available infrastructure. Would be set aside specifically for their use.
Okay, I understand that. It's not, the system itself, but I'm speaking of the cost to maintain it.
Oh, well.
Based on the same usage.
It would be, it would be based on the usage as well. So, if the BOE was using, you know, 50% or 75%, they would pay 75% of whatever that operating expense was.
Okay, that is, that's it.
One thing I did want to add, we started this in 2007, correct?
Believe that's right.
Now, the wheels fell off the financial world in 2008. I mean, and most people, it didn't matter if you had found the fountain of youth, I think companies in general were scared to death to do anything, because they have the same problem we all as individuals had, they have lots of debt, they've had a chance to deleverage. I'm hoping that maybe we're in a new day, because, I mean, companies have huge surpluses of cash that they didn't have in the past. Maybe we can knock on some wood and hope that we get a little luck here. But I agree with you, Commissioner Holder. I mean, I'm hoping that the private sector will see this and step forward, but if they don't, we can keep the door open. I mean.
I agree with you, and we have tried, it's a new day, I don't have a problem with going back, because I would rather see it myself as something that was, I don't like to compete with the private sector, and as I think you said.
One thing I will bring up.
Normally, government is not the best provider of services that are fast.
To the private sector.
That's exactly.
Well, one thing I would, I would like to bring up, and that is, there's a bill that's in the Georgia State Senate, Senate Bill 313, which we successfully were able to actually work with the authors of the bill, and actually go speak with some of those folks. And this plan that you see today, and let me say this about Senate Bill 313, it was, it was heavily supported by the incumbent telecommunications industry in Georgia. After we had a chance to show them what our plan and how our plan was set up, there was a few changes that they made to their bill, and actually, our method here satisfied all the needs of Senate Bill 313. I don't think Senate Bill 313 is going to be an issue right now, because it's in, it was voted on by the Telecommunications and Infrastructure Committee a few weeks ago, and has been sent to a study group for at least a year, which means it won't come up, it'll take at least two years before it makes it back up into the legislature for a vote again. But their concerns was the impact that SB 313 was going to have on economic development, and that's why it's in a study group today. Nonetheless, our plan met all the needs of that bill.
Mr. Holder?
At the end of the fifteen-year period, of course, we would own it. As far as maintenance, what is the life of those cables? And what kind of repair or maintenance or upgrade could we expect at the end of fifteen years? I can't imagine it to be none, so, I mean, it would have to be something.
We think that $331,000 is still sufficient, obviously. I can't tell exactly where we're going to be in fifteen years. However, the life expectancy for fiber optic cable, such as the one that was passed around earlier, is at a bare minimum fifty years. Truth is, we don't know, because it's not been out there that long. Some say that it's probably at least a hundred years. I mean, we're still operating on some of the copper network that has been around for over a hundred years today. And I can tell you that the glass, the fiber optic is much more resilient, corrosion-resistant, that sort of thing, than the copper network is.
I know it's more expensive to repair, but it's getting more feasible. Last question, I think it is, unless something else comes up. The piece of cable that you passed around, we know that, as you said, there's a standard size that all fiber is. And we saw the filler strands inside the fiber cable that you have. And you said that one of the greatest costs of that cable was in the fillers, correct?
It's in the petroleum cost, the cost for all the plastic.
Of the filler?
Yes.
Well, why would somebody not, knowing that they were going to sell future use from the cable, order the cable with less filler and more fiber? I know there's a point to where they have to have so much filler in it to make the cable workable. But why wouldn't you load it up with the most fiber for potential future use?
For our plan, we would.
Okay, that's my question, because in this one that you showed us, there's more filler than there is fiber.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments from the board? On the next steps that have been outlined by Clark, would it be safe to say that the Board would like them to move forward and obtain this additional information, and also in addition to reach out to the current providers with an official letter and say, "Are you interested in providing this service to Henry County?" And see what kind of feedback we get?
I would like to add also, because I've got to believe there's some studies, or maybe we can just go look at our neighbors and see who other providers are that maybe aren't in our current market.
That may want an opportunity.
Let's give them a, with the private sector entities, let's let them know, "We've done the business plan for you, it's fertile ground, come make money off of us." And I think, maybe that will encourage the existing two providers, maybe they want to take a second look, too.
I'd just like to make one final comment, and that is, I don't want to sacrifice the future of our kids and their education, along with other things, such as the water plants and our government buildings, but especially the education of our kids over the next generation by having them a so standard or inadequate system. And basically, that's what we have today. If it becomes, if it comes to the point that the private sector does not want to step forward and to assist us in making this possible, then I would be one that would be ready to move forward. I'm just saying, they need to be given a last chance, and I would feel good at defending the position or the direction that we go in, if I know that they are not willing to come to the table. And at this point, they have not, as we know. But that's kind of the position that I'm in.
Well, and I think that there's been, because we have discussed this for how many years now?
I have.
There's a lot of misinformation out there among the public, and when they hear fiber.
Sure.
They hear, "Oh, you want to provide cable internet service to citizens in the county."
I'll be the first to it, too, you know, that, you know, this has been a process. The version and the methodology and where we stand today is vastly different than where we were several years ago. You know, when we started this, it was, we were going to offer service to the private sector, they were, you know, we counted on those numbers as to how long it would take to pay it off and all that. And so, we've judged public opinion along the way, and we really, I personally appreciate, you know, many of the comments and that sort of thing that, you know, I received out in the public and, you know, while, you know, at the grocery store or, you know, wherever else, because it really does help shape, you know, making sure that we're on track with what the public wants. And I think that's where we are today.
So, just to sum everything up, so we sort of leave here on a solid footing, we're talking about a fiber network to link all government buildings together for government use, with dark fiber for any private sector company that might want to come in. You're going to pursue the next steps that you've outlined, but in addition to that, you are going to reach out to any and all private entities to ask them to come into Henry County and provide the service to us. And you'll bring us a complete report back and any responses that you get. Beyond Charter and AT&amp;T, anybody that any of our neighboring counties.
We'll reach out to anyone that I've had contact with, or anyone that I'm well aware of, we'll put it on the website, we'll, you know, all the normal work with Julie's group and to see if there's anybody else out there we can reach. Anyone that's doing business in surrounding counties and agencies, that sort of thing. We'll do a job there.
And Charter and AT&amp;T.
Yeah, include the, yeah, the dividend.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
They need to be made a part of it and be given a last chance, too.
They should be able to do it cheaper.
Because they've already got some existing infrastructure.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, I know we had one citizen that signed that for public comment. We usually do public comment at the end, but because this citizen wanted to speak on fiber optic, I'm going to go ahead and recognize her now, Ally Osuch of 612 Red Bud Lane in Stockbridge, and she is going to speak on fiber optics, and you have five minutes. Good morning.
Good morning. Chairman Mathis, Commissioners, and the County Staff. I want to thank you all for the efforts that you put in every day to help us citizens. You have a very tough job, and some of us appreciate that. Also, thank you, Mr. Rayner, for giving the presentation. And let me start by saying, I think we should buy him a laptop.
Six years?
The budget. But when it's, when it's, the money is available, buy, get him another laptop. I appreciate his comment. First of all, let me state that I love fiber optics. I was one of those around in the eighties when it first came out, and I can remember the delight of the individual that said, "Oh, my gosh, you've got to hear about this, fiber optics." And it was really, would people later on, you know, found out about the internet and the cellphone and whatever, fiber optics is awesome, and there's no dispute about that. However, I don't believe the fiber optic cable project is beneficial to citizens, and for the reasons that some of you already know, but I'll just enumerate here some of them. One is, if AT&amp;T and Charter and them don't want to make the capital investment, why should our government? All right, that's, that doesn't make sense to me. Also, research shows that municipal broadband is a failure. And unfortunately, I'm sure there's some successes, but even in Georgia, we have many examples. The one maybe most prominent is Marietta, and think Tifton and Thomiston, and they're very close to us. We can, we can go there, we can talk to them, we can find out why they were failures. And those cities apparently abandoned their cable projects three to five years later. We're talking about getting a return on investment in fifteen. They couldn't even wait three to five, and this was during good times. You know, this was during early 2000, I understand. And that's a concern to me. I ask you, why would Henry County do better than that? Also, Alpharetta is listed as success, they had a jumpstart. They had the Olympics. My goodness, if we can get the Olympics here or something like that, maybe we can get a jumpstart, we can get a fiber optic cable and run with it, and move from there. Back to Mr. Rayner's presentation, I like ten times more service for the same amount of money. That's easy, we all do. But why do we need a thousand percent improvement in the quality of services? That's, to me, that's kind of crazy. Remember that technology purchases have no upper limit. There's no upper limit. Look at your cellphone. Look at your cellphone bill. My first bill was $12, $12.50, and now it's up to 100, just to have it. Anyway, you know this, technology has no upper limit. Also, I would just ask that you please demonstrate the problems more clearly to the citizens. Thank you, Commissioner Preston. Loved hearing what you had to say today. Had not heard that. You know, we need to know that. But as far as the problems, I haven't seen enough problem to justify this level of a solution. Also, who's going to, how's this going to be paid for? I haven't researched this, you know, completely, but I understand revenue bonds can't be used for telecommunications. There's got to be alternative ways to fund it. Maybe the legislation in the Senate will accomplish that. Also, this project has been in draft for several years, as was stated, and it was presented in February 2012. And at that time, from what I was reading, it was deemed to be too expensive. I ask you, what has changed? Okay, things have just gotten worse. Perhaps this project could be dormant until the economy approves, or a better case could be made for it. Also, I urge the Board of Commissioners, as you're already doing, I'm sure, to please turn the focus on areas where we would have a potential promotional edge with our money. We have a fantastic hospital. What about improvements for the medical field? We have the Speedway. What about tech schools that support mechanics? We also have this airport. Why not work in the field of aviation? And anyway, we are not Alpharetta, and we never will be. I think we should leverage our strengths, leverage our assets, spend money there. That's what Alpharetta did. They leveraged their assets. And go to broadband when the need is demonstrated, when business does it, not government, thank you, and when the money's available. And lastly, please buy Mr. Rayner a new laptop, or do smaller improvements that will help us incrementally. Why go with the Cadillac or the Lexus? You know, I've got a Honda. That does fine. Anyway, I really appreciate you listening to my comments today. And again, thank you for what you're doing, and have a very good day. Thanks.
Thanks. Clark, did you want to add anything to that? Because I know you've studied some of the other areas that might help clarify some things.
I know Marietta has been used as a sort of poster child for failure, but actually, it ended up making money at the end of the day.
Is that a different system? I mean, are they doing different things up there? What are they doing?
It was completely, the plan was completely different. I mean, it actually, you know, it included a great deal of, you know, basically selling service to the end users. It included some cable delivery, video deliveries, and things like that. Really overcomplicated it. It was ultimately sold out to American Fiber after it had been in operation for about 15 years, and it had been bringing in revenue. So that project ended up being a, you know, basically a revenue and profit neutral project by the end of the day because of the revenues it brought in over time. You know, it was just a choice of the local city council there to do what they did when they decided to sell it.
Are there any models of just government-to-government service? I mean, governments that just are tying their own government operations together?
Sure, sure. Gwinnett County DOT is a good example. Gwinnett County DOT is, has been running and continues to run their own fiber network just to service DOT. That's all they service is just the traffic lights. The City of Atlanta Public School System is currently in the market right now, where they're building a network connecting all their schools, the Atlanta Public School System, and the City of Atlanta is actually a partner. If you've heard of any of the downtown security camera projects and that sort of thing that's going on in downtown Atlanta, that's tied in with that fiber initiative as well. And they're showing that their revenues, I mean, their expenses are paying for that outright, and their numbers are a lot higher than ours, just for City of Atlanta. And those are just a couple that are here very close. There's also the City of Noonan. They ran theirs. They made a $30 million profit on their network when they actually sold it out. That's how they addressed their financial woes when the revenues went down. That was the option that they used. But there's also Grange, their City of Thomasville. Some of those aren't necessarily all government projects, government-to-service government projects. They're quasi-hybrid-type networks. But there's certainly many. The City of Duluth has a network. City of Dalton has one. And those are all just in Georgia. The most recent one that's had tremendous amount of success across the board for government and for economic development is City of Chattanooga. If you hear about industries moving to Chattanooga, the biggest comparison I hear of is Nashville is losing business to Chattanooga because of the infrastructure that's been put in place in Chattanooga. And I assume that we are here, too.
And have you spoken to any of the government entities that have just supplied fiber just for government, not going outside and providing it for the private sector?
The primary one is Columbia County. It's just outside of Augusta. And they are, they're in the process of actually getting theirs up and running. I will tell you that there was some ARRA funding that was applied for and being used in that particular project. But their project is almost identical to ours in terms of they're supplying the government use side and then wholesaling any dark fiber to the private sector, very similar to ours. And SB 313, by the way, exempted Henry and Columbia County because of that aspect.
The majority of them are cities that you just named.
Majority, the majority are cities.
Is a lot of that because of what we said earlier about the density?
There is a lot, a lot of that has to do with density. A lot of it has to do with scale. A lot of it has to do with many cities already own their own utility network, their own electric utility.
Sure.
And the two go hand in hand, of course. You know, we've worked very closely with our electric providers here.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for the coming by the laptop.
We'll hear this time and time again, I'm sure. But we'll just, we'll wait for you to get that additional information and get the letters back that you send out to the private sector, inviting them to participate and come into Henry County.
I'm completely keeping my fingers crossed that the private sector's going to come and do something. Maybe things haven't improved enough, and we'll get some response back this time. I certainly hope so.
Great. Thank you, Clark.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our quick budget update, Mike Bush.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Member. This is a report for January of this year, where we're currently at. We have currently brought in $85,765,351 for the year, and on a 12-month average budget, it was at $65 million. So, but we collect all of our money in the middle three months of the year for taxes and things like that. But if you compare our collections this year versus last year, we're $3,359,054, less than we had collected last year. But the majority of that reasoning is because of the mileage rate, or not, I'm sorry, the housing market decline, the residential decline in the, in the mileage rate. We collected less taxes this year than we did last year, and that's what that $3 million represents. So again, we're at $85 million in revenues on a year where you've got $112 million budget. And as you can see, last year, the budget was $117 million, and the largest difference between those two is the taxes collected based on the mileage rate and the declining value of property. This is the expenditures for the year. Again, we're at the same $65 million on an average monthly basis. We've spent $63 million. And the difference between this year and last year is we've spent $349,199 less this year than we did last year. If you go through each one of these line items, general government, the budget's $8.05. We've spent $8.05. Judicial, $8.01. We spent 7.7. Skip past public safety, we'll come back. Public work, 4.4. We spent 4. Health and welfare, 2.9. We spent 3. Cultural recreation, 2.9. We spent 3. Housing, 1.2 million. We spent 1.2 million. And other sources, 3 million. We spent 3.9. I'll first say on other sources, that's our debt service, and some of our debt service are come due July 1 of the year, so that's why you see a little bit more. Every month, that difference will get smaller and smaller and smaller. Back up to public safety, the difference there is 2 million 2, basically. We had in our early retirement package that we sent out, or immediate retirement incentive package we sent out, there were 23 people who took it. Of those 23, I believe 18 of those were public safety, or 17. And of those positions, I can tell you, the sheriff probably had seven or eight, and there's probably four or five positions he hasn't even filled at all. You know, he's doing everything he can to keep the dollars down. He did replace some, then some of the others he replaced. He took a, let's say, a captain retired. He filled that position with a sergeant. He downgraded it two or three spots, so we're still saving money. Even every year going forward, we'll save money. And so did the other departments as well. So that's one of the reasons. Another reason is, public safety makes up about 75% of our people and 75% of our budget. And currently, we have about eight or nine vacancies in the fire department, constantly having two or three or four in the police department. So there's dollars that haven't been spent because we didn't have the people in the place to spend them. So even though public safety looks a little bit misleading, it's really the lack of, or the vacancies that we've had in positions that we didn't have to spend the money because we didn't have the people there. And a lot of that has to do with the departments. I think it was the fire department told me the other day, by the time somebody leaves to fill a position, it takes six months just to get somebody. They may have, they can shift people up, but the, you know, the bottom line is still vacant until they can have the classes to get people in and things like that. So in all, we've spent $63 million. We've brought in $85 million to this point in the year. So we're pretty well on line with the budget as it is right now. That's the general fund operations of the county. And I wanted to talk about a little bit of good news. That's good enough. If you'll look at that FY12 on this very far side, these are the collections we've collected this year. The, this column is the percentage of this column to this column. So the percentage of 2011 over 2010, and this one's 10 over 9 with the percentages. In 2010, we had six months that were above 2009 and six months that were below 2009. In 2011, again, we had six months of collections, like for in July. July's collections in 2011 were 2.282 million versus 2.284 million in 2010. So it was less than what was collected in 2010. So if you go to the column in 2012, every one of those columns are positive numbers. That means every month, we've collected more than we collected in that same month in 2011. We collected a total of $27,891,314.74 in 2011. Right now, we are projected to collect $29,190,545.76, which is well over $1 million more in this year than we collected last year. Now, I, just to make it fair, I took the $3,055,000 that we collected in January, I took it out, took the other seven months, averaged those seven months, multiplied that times 11, and added back in December. So I did not take that big month and make it look like the average is bigger. It would be more along the lines of $29.6 million if I did that. So we feel like we're in some good times as far as the penny sales tax. It also affects the general fund and the lost dollars. They also are showing about a 6% increase over last year. Now, last year, you know, if you notice, it was less than 2009. So 2010 and 2011 were less than collections in 2009. So maybe we have hit the bottom and are headed back up. We hope so, but I just wanted to show you that we are showing positive trends every single month for the last seven months. That's just what I want to say. And that's all I got. Unless anybody's got a question?
Does anybody have a question or a comment? We like good news.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Alata, anything for public comment?
I just want to make a comment on the fiber optic, if I could. I met with staff, and basically, as everybody has said, this proposal's been out there since 2007. And what I was trying to do is to get the staff to sort of move it forward or quit talking about it. One of the key factors, as you heard Mr. Rayner speak of, and that was the elimination of the competition, which many people have mentioned, competing with the private sector. Comment was made about regarding the competition at the present time and the past that has bid on this. I've heard figures, I believe that I heard when AT&amp;T and Comcast came forward, their estimates to do this was in the 20-plus million dollars. Today, that figure may be less than 14, for all we know. Businesses have a certain amount of capital. At the time, when the economy was down, that amount of capital they wanted to put into something they may consider not in Atlanta, but in their eyes, maybe a rural community as they may look at us because of our population size and where we're at. This provides, in my opinion, an opportunity to say to the, to those competitors, this is not going to get bandied around. We're serious about taking a look at it, so you need to be serious. And I don't, I think until we become serious, it's going to continue to give them an out that says, you know, the business model we have doesn't need to be considered for Henry. We want to save for other places. And in addition to that, the other providers of this hopefully will pop up, and Clark has those people as well. So the purpose of all this today was to bring it to the forefront and say, "It's time to say we have something, we don't." Make people that are in the industry know that we're serious as to where the cost, you know, in business, all businesses have the opportunity to buy. And I was in the trucking industry, as you know, logistics or whatever. You know, we had an option to buy our trucks, we had an option to lease our trucks, we had an option that, you know, and a lot of other things, office buildings or whatever else that businesses buy. At the end of the day, you're going to pay for it. You're either going to make somebody else rich in the process, because after renting those buildings, they own them, and whether you stay or not, they're going to continue to keep that structure and use it and make money. Talking about the 15 years when this is paid for, my thought is, if we can't find somebody initially, but it makes economic sense, and the board feels that way when the next presentation is brought forth with the information you've asked, it may be that somebody's going to ask us to build it, because maybe we can build it cheaper based on their labor costs and other things that they see, or it may not be the appropriate time. If the budget that we come up with that says this is a guaranteed, what is going to cost, doesn't move, doesn't float, the things that we need the security in, when it's all said and done, we may have people that say, "You build it, we'll buy it." And at that time, again, we're getting our money back, and we won't be floating anything. The key to this, though, is the fact that it is not going to compete with the private sector. We're not selling services. We're not even going to manage it. It is not, it's not going to be a municipal broadband service. It is basically just buying, if you would, like in business, you buy your trucks and you're going to use them because you need them to operate your business. And this is broadband that we need, that we're presently using. It's just a matter of whether we take and make the investment and call it debt versus paying, writing a check every month to those people that are out there. Hopefully, as I said, by being serious, we'll have other people in other counties or maybe outside of the state of Georgia that may look at this as a no-brainer, as Commissioner mentioned, because, and Mr. Holder also mentioned, and that is, it's there. You put in X and you get X. It's break even. Anything you add to it, selling the lines themselves and not being, not operating them, it just adds to the revenues that are coming in. So again, what Mr. Rayner asked for was just the approval to take it forward so we can explore with anybody and everybody now that we have a business model that works for anybody in business to come in. And if they're smart, they'll see they can add to it and make a good profit themselves, which we're not interested in profit-loss. We just want the service and pay exactly or less than what we're presently paying. So that is, I just wanted to add that to it, just from that standpoint of how the staff and myself will be moving forward to get all that put together for you. So that's it. And other than that, I have nothing else at this time.
Thank you. Ms. County Attorney, anything for public session?
No, ma'am. Upcoming meetings and events tomorrow, March the 6th at 9:00 a.m. We have a regular meeting, excuse me, Monday, March 19th at 9:00 a.m. And Tuesday, March 20th at 6:30 p.m. These are both regular meetings. We have no need for an executive session today, so if there's no further business to come before this board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. We stand adjourned.